We don't have a scheduled executive session. Does anybody else have a need for one?
It'll be a little late, you said.
Oh, he did, he is, okay, cool. Any need to amend the agenda?
You could take the tax rate thing off if we want, because we don't have.
Well, no, because I'm going to.
Okay, you want to have that conversation, right, right.
Not even a con- we could just like mention why, you know. So, do I, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda.
Check it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything on the select board minutes of June 19th? We also had the health order violation meeting minutes of July 3rd.
I thought those were signed.
I thought we signed them the time before.
Yeah, last month.
Oh.
I thought we did too.
Yeah, they were signed.
I know, that's what I get for blindly reading the agenda.
That shouldn't be on there, sorry about that.
That's fine.
Alright.
Okay, town manager's report.
Another correction. The 19th minutes, shouldn't that be July 3rd minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, boy, we really should.
Oh.
Somebody must have copied and pasted.
Yeah, I know, see, this is again, why I shouldn't just be blindly reading.
I'll talk to that person.
Yeah.
Yeah, you better.
Trade, trade her out.
No, I don't think it's a her.
No, I know it isn't.
Oh, no, I know who does it, it's not me. It's okay, no worries.
Well, yeah, no, but good for catching it.
We will double check next time, sorry about that.
The amended, it'll be corrected. So, do you have to back up and amend the agenda now?
No.
Do I?
Why?
I don't know.
Because it's not as posted. You can correct the agenda to say the July 3rd minutes.
I think for a typo.
Okay.
I think we're fine.
Okay.
And then remove the health order?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Town manager's report.
Highway department spent our grade in repairing some of our gravel, gravel roads that took a beating through some of the recent storm activity. We didn't have any major issues. We did do, so why are you guys laughing?
Because you said gravel.
Oh, I know, I caught it in the middle there. So, and like actually some more stuff too. The guys, they started doing more roadside mowing this week, just the weeds went crazy the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Boys in first now.
Um, and, yeah, they, that's what's been going on. I've been doing some more stone line ditching work. I showed Alicia a couple of spots today, we went out for a ride, so. Just busy doing summer stuff. Chad's been getting prices on the rapid repeating flashing, rapid repeater flashing beacons for the crosswalks. They're quite expensive now, we're like, the two quotes we've got are like six grand for the lights and the, you know, because of the lights and there's the solar thing. So, we're still calling around to find some better pricing, it seems a little crazy.
Was that the pair?
That would, you're gonna have four of them, so front and back on both sides of the.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, I guess it's been a while since they were purchased, but we're gonna, we're gonna call around.
I don't know, those ones by, was it, there are some by, is it Kamuta's now?
No, that's where we want to put them.
Where's the other?
The school?
There's a set by the school, those have been there.
Some down here, and then there's some at the Catholic church. I think the Catholic church is their own. Yeah, and then.
Then Lowell Thrope.
And then Dollar General put them in when they did that crosswalk there.
I always forget about that.
Oh, I don't know as I've ever seen them on.
Yeah.
I've never seen anybody use it, like.
So, and we, because we already have the poles that are, that Vtrans put installed for us to hang the lights on, because they have to be a little bit beefier. So, we're, we're still trying to, $6,000 seems like a lot of money for those, so.
Yeah.
We have distributed a lot of the open, new open meeting law rules to, well, we distributed to the planning commission. I've reached out to regional planning for guidance on training materials, so we're all, because this is starting to become a big deal. We're talking earlier about making sure that our, because our meetings all have to be recorded.
Yep.
On how I'm gonna call PEG TV tomorrow and see if we can have a link on our website that takes some of the ones that are there. But, we should probably look at getting a YouTube station or something, so that when the minutes are done, we can post them on there. Because we don't have that much, we can't, too much data for our server. So, and it's requirement that someone needs to be able, can go to our website and at least see a link to get to a video meeting, so. So, we are required to have training by January 25. When I talked to Devin Neri at Regional Planning, he said that state hasn't pushed anything out yet for training, but we're all gonna have to do it, so. I'm hoping is what happens is they, like say Alicia and I have to train, and then we can come and do just a workshop at a regular select board meeting, or a joint one with the planning commission and the ZBA and everyone else, but, so, more to come on that, I guess, you know, it's still new for everybody.
That's what it sounded like, though, that we could do that.
On request, we did send reappointment letters to the planning commission. The lead water line survey that.
Oh, it's okay, I've got some issues on this end.
Okay.
It's not, oh, just go.
The Otter Creek has been doing is at 95% completion so far, they have not detected any lead lines. So, that needs to be wrapped up by October, so we're, we're almost there. Sean has been pushing them to really get it done, so.
Well, is it just the ones that aren't done, or the people who were, didn't want anybody to come in their house?
We had a few of those, but we've got a couple of streets left that just need to be.
Okay.
Double checked, so, but that's good, they're, and actually, from what I've heard statewide, they're not really finding much, so that's a good thing. We had a work safe inspection on all of our buildings last week, so this is kind of like a pre-votsha, OSHA inspection. The report came to Anne today, and I think I have a copy of it right here. There wasn't a lot on, no, I guess I don't, that's the liquor stuff. It was some pretty minor stuff, like we had some, some outlet boxes downstairs that needed covers and some stuff in the, like the highway and wastewater, similar things like that. The stairwell that goes up to the room upstairs out of the town clerk's office needs to be cleared out. That was, there was too much stuff on the stairs, so, just some minor things that will get done, but I, they came because I guess OSHA's been really coming around to town offices and, you know, their fines can be hefty, so.
Well, I believe there's a new, new law, isn't there, that they're enforcing?
I don't know.
Fire stations and everything have to comply, right?
Well, we had, we had lost control from passive Wade Major, I don't know if you remember Wade from the league, he's been around for a while. He came last year to go to our garages and stuff, because there's a lot of things that change, like you have to have a designated area for your grinder or whatever, and make sure your fire extinguishers are, and you have to have like a red line that goes down, so all this stuff, and we complied with all of that, but they came in and found a couple of other things, there's just outlets and stuff, so. Easy stuff to take care of, which is good, so, we've gotta, we've gotta do those changes and then report back to them, and all, all good there, it was nothing, nothing major. Then the Bridge 108 update for the week, they're working on the town pedestrian bridge and the water line at the same time, so. That's all I have for my town manager report, Liz's rep report is here. There's one thing I wanted to add, we've had a little, I've been having some conversation about the Belden contract with the, with the UTOs down there, the Uniform Traffic Officers. I did fill Alicia in on this today. That their inspector came to us and said we couldn't pull cars over in the construction zone, that we were supposed to just have. So, I pulled the, the state spec book, and it's very vague on what it says for what, when a uniform traffic officer is there. So, until, I've called the state for clarification, I've talked to Carolyn Cota, and she's reading it the same way I am, which I'm glad. But, so she's going above that, and I was told it was a federal highway issue, and I called my contact at Federal Highway, and he said, no, if it is, it's a statute, there's no statute on it. So, the statute says you can double fines in work zones if there, you know, it says fines double. So, for now, we're gonna have our, the UTO there, and we'll, we're gonna, I think we're gonna have someone else sit down at the church, because they've been sitting on top of the hill. I've someone sit at church for a couple of days, at least for this week, so, because we've been catching cars at like 55 miles an hour going through that bridge. So, it's real, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
And that was what we expressed, and actually, I talked to the safety officer at Belden today, and he feels the same way, like, he says, I'm not even worried about the traffic, I'm worried about the cars hitting people that are working in the construction area. So, and I, I told him too, like, if we can't, if we can't write tickets in the work zone, it's kind of pointless for us to be there, so.
Yeah.
But I guess this stemmed out of somewhere else that's happened in the state, and cars ended up getting pulled over on like a road down the, down from the construction zone, so the, the UTO was not on the site, so. Hopefully, we can get that straightened out, because that's not good, so. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
Okay. I'm just realizing, so we should have amended the agenda to put this on. I'm just like looking at all my extra papers here.
I am not with it tonight, yeah, that's right, we have some liquor, well, we'd have to do Board of Liquor Commissioners for that anyway, right?
Sorry?
We'd have to open it for Board of Liquor Commissioners.
Right.
We can amend it.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, so do we have to go?
You can amend it under select board comments and.
Okay, alright.
Mark, do you have anything now? Mark?
No.
Do we have any other select board remarks before I add that in?
I was going, I would like to amend the agenda to add the liquor board.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else, from anyone? Any public comment?
We have no public.
No public, no.
Nobody.
Okay, no old business, new business, Plains Road paving quotes.
So, I have, we got quotes for the, when the sewer lines done out here from Pike and Wilk. I did a little, little snippet for you guys of what came off their bids, so. Just looking for approval on that. Wilk is cheaper on this one.
Yeah, by about.
The tonnage was, was pretty similar, so I wasn't too worried about that.
I would make a motion to go Wilk paving for the Plains Road paving project after the sewer, water lines are, sewer lines are done. Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. First response vehicle bid results, I think, did we just have the one?
We just had one, so we did, I posted it in the reporter for two weeks.
Okay, so we're gonna wait and see what else comes in?
Well, the two weeks were.
Oh, it's up, it's been, been two up.
It was up on Monday. Monday?
Yes.
No, last Monday.
Bill, can you call him so we can hear his speakerphone? Mark?
Why, that's not working?
He had audio and now he doesn't.
Get it going.
Is ours working?
I restarted and I'm not on mute, he's not on mute, and he has nothing.
The system's not so hot.
Well, no, I know, and now that we're required to have all these recordings, it's frustrating, because.
Oh, he's got it.
There he is.
Hey.
There. Oh, now, we don't, wait a minute, he's coming through on this one now too, right?
Yes.
So, one of these needs to shut off.
He's gotta mute his. You gotta mute your end.
Now that won't get recorded, oh, well.
There. Can you hear us on your computer?
No.
Nope, he's just.
Turn that one back on.
Oh, he can hear it on the phone now.
On the phone.
So, I guess, yeah, we'll just leave the phone open, or phone open.
Okay.
He's right by that speaker, so it should get recorded.
You need to hit your speaker to turn the button.
Why are they not on?
There you go.
Probably just got here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Too much technology.
Yeah.
What is going on?
Okay.
Anyways, yeah, that one first response bid.
Right.
That's all we have.
That's all we got, yeah. So, this is the old suburban from first response, it's not inspectable. I'm sure that Joe put a bid in, because he has one and probably a parts vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure. I think he's accepted bid.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the bid.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it. Well, yeah. I'll call him tomorrow and let him know.
Great. Oh, for crying out loud, what is going on?
You're okay now.
Oh.
You're okay now? Yep, we got.
It's done when we call.
Huh.
So weird, okay.
I got jealous, must be.
I guess, yeah.
Must be. Jeez.
Alright, Veemers for fiscal year 2026.
I know we had a discussion about this a little while ago, about moving some of the employees to Veemers Group from A to C.
Yep.
So, this does not take effect. Mark, you can still hear me, right?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, so, I called Veemers and I think, oh, Anne's got it in the letter too, so.
Yeah.
It has to be approved no later than December 31st this year, and it take, doesn't take effect until July 1st, so. I know Mark's concern was that we wanted to make sure we were budgeted for it.
Yep.
So, that's, and this is one of the steps, it's just like when we did mine. So, the board has to approve it, and then we send it to them, and then July 1st it becomes effective.
Didn't we already vote to approve?
Not this one, no.
Yes, you did, but not.
Yeah, I think the big concern was that we wanted.
We discussed it, I guess.
You guys wanted to see when it would take effect, if it was the middle of the fiscal year, or if the start of the.
Oh, yeah, no, I, okay, I do remember that now.
Somebody explain to me what this is, because I don't.
Sure. So, it's the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System. So, all of the employees in this town were in group A, which is kind of the lowest group level. The town does have more, a little more of a contribution, I think it was like seven or eight grand a year, I'm trying to remember now.
Numbers off the top of my head.
And then the employee gets to put up to, I think, 11%. So, and the town does whatever, it's like three more percent than, or four more percent than what we're doing now, so it's like to be six or seven percent, I think. But, it's a better retirement plan for the employee, you know, grows quicker, they're fully vested in five years. They can retire with their full pension at 55. So, that's, that's the big thing, but it's, it's a good retirement plan for, you know, like Sean and Chad and Anne are looking at it, because, you know, they're more at the age of where they're thinking about retirement than having a bigger paycheck, so. I think it's a great thing to have for our supervisors too, or department heads to, just a little incentive to keep them here too, so.
So, would the decision be up to them if they wanted to do it or not, but we're making it available, or?
So, the, they came out of it because they had inquired about it, so.
Alright.
Yeah, they want to put more money in, so it does increase our, our, the town's piece a little bit as well, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but they get, they get to contribute much more too, so.
Yeah, I think six thou, was it gonna be?
It was six or $7,000, yeah.
Wasn't gonna be a lot extra.
Yeah, because there's only four that want to do it, so, we, we pulled.
So, it is their deci, is their option.
It's their decision.
Okay.
So, when that, when that gets changed, so basically, if they, if they got done, that position would still be at the Veemers C unless we did this whole thing again. So, it stays, it stays with that position until the board changes it again too.
Position specific and not person specific.
Yeah. It used to be department specific, but now it's, they've loosened it up, where if it's like department heads, or, you know, like even police has one that's group D that's pretty similar to, because they try to retire police officers at a younger age, obviously, so, yeah.
Okay.
But.
Thank you.
So, I will make a motion that we change this from group A to group C, or at least make it available to our employees.
Do you have to make the motion for all the employees, or just these listed?
It's just these, it's the, the four that are in here, yeah.
Do you want?
Yeah, so, for, da-da-da-da-da, assistant to the town manager, highway supervisor, water, wastewater supervisor, and assistant water, wastewater supervisor from group A to group C.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Check it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, what is the exact amount?
I had that in your packets the last time we talked about it, Mark, it was somewhere around 7,000, I can't, I can't remember it off the top of my head.
Is it in our minutes from the last time?
Um, I, I don't know, it was a few meetings ago when we talked about this, so.
Yeah.
What about the assistant, I thought it was for the supervisors, where did the assistant come into play?
So, well, Anne is my assistant, was one that asked for it, and then Tyler as assistant water sewer operator. I mean, this, he's still holding the license too, so, you know, it's, um, yeah. I, uh, Mark, I, I can send you. I can send you those numbers, I, I know I gave them to you guys the first time we talked about this, so. I, I don't have them right off the top of my head.
I know, I think we had agreed that during the meeting that we discussed it, that it was acceptable, we just wanted to make sure that.
I think it was like 6,800 bucks, so I, that's why I said 7,000, is that?
Right, but we just wanted to make sure it was gonna be budgeted, so that it would be not, but so, and this will be, take care of that, because it won't take effect until.
July 1st.
July 1st.
So, we'd budget for it in November.
That $7,000 is total for all of them.
Yes, for all of them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I remember, anyway.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Did you say nay, Mark?
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alicia, just a point of clarity for me.
Yes.
I think we passed the quote to Wilk.
Yes.
Did I miss through the audio?
Yes.
And then did you accept the bid on the?
Yes, we did. Yep.
That's what I think, just want to make sure.
Yep. Okay, so, next agenda item is set the tax rate for fiscal year 2025, which we can't do yet, because we have not gotten that from the state.
Correct.
So.
So, we can't even set dates when taxes will be paid yet, until we get that.
No. Nope, so, and I'm sorry, did you say that they gave you a general idea, or no, you, they were, you were given no idea when we would actually?
End of the month is what Pat told me, and she asked about it before she left on vacation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Our state government at work.
So efficient. Okay, so, moving on.
Send them a penalty, should we send them a penalty bill?
I think we should. Uh, any questions on the orders, including there was a new one, or a more current one that was not in the package?
I'm gonna rely on you guys to look over the new one.
Yeah.
I, I'd really like it if we didn't have to do this, these two every time, but if we are still delivering packets on Friday, we still have to do it, so. Which is, which is unfortunate.
We don't have to do it, we just select to do it, didn't I correct?
I think the issue was that we were running into some problems with some of the vendors that needed to be paid a little bit sooner. So, because we have, what, five days between the board, packet delivery and the meeting, so. And I know it was causing some issues with some of them, I, I was.
So, those vendors, their terms are, are over 19 days then?
So, like the phone companies want them on a specific date, I know our gas cards were one that was a big one, like if you don't pay it on the day that it's due, they shut it down. We've had that happen twice when I first started here. So, yeah, it's kind of a pain.
I guess the only thing I've got questions on, winning image graphics, the first response, Durango graphics, did we put that out to bid, or did we just go to them?
We went to them.
Just went to them.
Um, I, let me ask Bob, he might, he might have called around on some, I know, I know we, no, I guess that was something different. Yeah, I'll have to ask Bob on that one.
Because I know the last time we got a police car graphic, it was, there was a guy up in Middlebury, I think it was a lot cheaper.
1,200 bucks is a pretty good deal. I can, I can ask.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it sounds less than, I know the police crews at that time, there was a huge difference between the two.
I will, I will ask Bob, I don't know if he put it, that one out to bid.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Any other questions, anyone? Okay.
Um, yeah, I'll pass the. Did you want to do liquor while we were doing this, or, no?
Well, I'm gonna, no, because then we get to recess the select board meeting to open a liquor board. Okay? So, just sign these real quick.
For the what?
For the, um, applicants.
Which is, I mean, it's maze, so. Oh, apparently not.
Which one's this one for?
Second class.
Alright, we'll recess, select boards open as liquor board. And we have, these are three separate applications.
Uh, you've got two.
Oh, one's two pages?
One is just the lot, the training certification.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, the first one, the one for common ground, that's, you know, maze and the bar, this was one that was approved a while back for caterer, and it lapsed because it was, I guess, be too far from the event.
Oh.
So, this is the one for Pittsford Rec for Pittsburgh Day.
Oh, okay.
So, it just basically needed to be renewed.
Okay.
Are those in our package, Dave?
Nope, Helen gave these to us this morning.
And then Dollar General?
Yeah, and that's their certification, that's the second page on that one.
They had a prior conviction reported?
Oh, remember the one that?
Oh, I guess I didn't, we all know the incident, or you know?
No, there was one, a few years ago, from another establishment.
I see.
Yeah. This shouldn't affect these guys.
Totally different establishment.
Totally different.
The application was like that big with all the.
So, the one for common ground, that's to serve alcohol?
That's the second class cater, for caterers for Pittsburgh Day.
So, we're serving alcohol at Pittsburgh Day, is that what this is?
They've done it, I think we did it last year too, with.
We have before.
It was Red Clover or, um, the one from, from Pitts, from Procter Leambrew.
Not at Pittsburgh.
I don't remember on Pittsburgh Day serving alcohol, it was the first time.
I don't think we've ever had beer in Pittsburgh Day.
I'm almost positive it was done last year.
I don't, are you sure it's for Pitt, for Pittsburgh Day and not for a different Pittsburgh event at Pittsburgh Rec?
That was done for the Sarah Stories.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it was not Pittsburgh Day. I don't believe it.
It was done for what, Mark?
Sarah Stories.
Sarah Stories.
Like a chili cup hop.
Yeah. It wasn't Pittsburgh Day, this is the first time.
So, where are they gonna set up?
So.
Pittsburgh.
Rec.
Pittsburgh Rec, August 3rd, that's Pittsburgh Day, isn't it?
No, it is, I just, we've never had.
So, they have to, they have to follow the state guidelines and do a roped off area, and it, it's only beer and wine.
No, I mean, it's, I just.
Um, no, well, Dan asked where they were setting up, so.
I just think in liability, I don't.
Well, they hold the liability, we don't hold it.
They hold the liability.
They hold all the liability. That's why they have to get the permit.
Within their demised area.
No one can go out of the demise, it has to, it's like if you go to the carnival or something.
What if somebody wanders out of there and falls in our pond?
Well, then it's on them for serving it to them, and them getting out of the, out of the gate, I guess, is what you'd call it. Okay, yeah, there's no liability on this.
I just don't remember there ever being alcohol at Pittsburgh Day.
Yeah, I know.
I don't either, but.
I didn't go last year either.
I thought we had it last year.
Not for Pittsburgh Day, there's been other events at the rec that, there has been, but, which is, I mean, I don't.
Do they pay a fee to the town for being able to be there and serve?
No, they buy the permit.
They buy a permit?
Yeah.
That's it?
That's it. We don't have any vendor permit in Pittsburgh, we don't have, like, an itinerary vendor permit where someone would come and do a, a sale permit, there's nothing in town.
That's my only comment.
My only comment is the amount of typos that are on this, that are from the, the state, so. I do, I mean, I, was, so, do we know anything, though, about the conviction for the other one? For the other one? It just says violation ID CV five five oh nine. Just assuming got caught selling to someone underage.
I don't know.
Which applications, Alicia?
Dollar General.
Where are you seeing there's a violation?
Right at the bottom of the front page, first page.
Second page.
Or maybe it's the second.
Wait a minute, first page.
They call the first page?
Yeah, very bottom.
Oh.
But that wasn't at the Pittsburgh store, am I right?
I don't know.
I really don't know. Helen's the one that does the, she's the gatekeeper for the liquor and tobacco licenses, so.
I know this one doesn't even, there's.
Or wait, well, or is it the person? I think it's for the person.
Before it was for the, the person.
Well, this says people, this is under people information.
So you think it's specific to this guy?
Specific to that person must be.
I don't know if it's a man, but.
Must be specific to that person. Because then you go around.
Solicitor license holder.
Well, maybe it's just something we take note of so that if, you know, there's another one, the next, you know?
Is this like a renewal or?
Yeah. So I, that's why I think we should again take note that there is one currently in.
Well.
The second one, I think.
Well, I think because you got person and then you got this name.
Yep.
Then you got another person, which is specifically Dollar General. There's no violations there. Then you got another person, which is another name where there's no violations. So I think it pertains to that specific person.
Okay.
Very confusing form.
It is confusing. I mean, it could be, was it when this person was working somewhere else? I mean. Anyways, just.
Or maybe they got a parking ticket. We don't know.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Don't know what it is.
That's true. All right. Well, other than that, I think we should take note of that just for future reference, um.
I will make a motion to approve.
Both?
Both, yes.
Do we have a second? All second?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, I would kinda like to know if, 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 uh, common ground or anybody has served, served alcohol at this event before.
Uh, no, they have at other events. No, they were just at the Village Farm event. Where else did they just serve, um, outside of their actual business?
Some, like Mark did say it was Sarah Stories, I guess, where they served a beer last time.
Leam Brew.
Right.
But not these guys. But these guys were just at the Village Farm.
Right at the last event we were at. So this.
Common ground was?
Yeah, they're the folks that own the bar now, Dan.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know they do, they've done quite a few in the area.
Yeah. Yeah, they own Maze Place and the bar.
They're pretty, pretty professional with it.
Okay. I mean, being at the, at the rec, I don't know.
That's only about.
No, that one, so the thing with this, so it's funny because I just, I went through this with someone in town.
Recording is in progress.
Aren't you on the, aren't you on the Pittsburgh Day committee?
Who was, uh, doing a, like a food truck, but it's a, it's a liquor truck.
Well, that's.
And they were going through, it's been a weird permit process because there's really not a permit for that. So I was trying to help them out with the state. And so learning a few things about it, like they, when they apply for these, like they have to make sure that there's, there's bathrooms in the area and if they can't, they have to provide them. Um, with the, they have to show that how they're doing their designated area. Um, there's quite a bit of stuff that the state requires them to do to do the caterer's permit for, for alcohol. Um, so.
So they're doing the food as well?
Uh, no, they just have to have the, that's what the, it's called an event permit, caterers or whatever, just for them to, they're not doing the food. No, I think there's a couple of food trucks there gonna be there too, if I remember right.
Nobody else has a problem with, there'll be a lot of kids at the rec?
Oh, I.
I don't know. I don't was, you know, I don't know how and how the.
Pittsburgh Day's a family day.
Committee came up with this, like whose idea it was.
It's kind of a.
Call for vote.
There, there was a lot of kids at the Sarah Stories too.
Yeah.
Well, that's true. And it is, I mean, that's.
It was controlled, it was controlled very well.
Yeah.
Do they have to have police there or anything? Are there police on duty at Pitts, Pittsburgh Day?
I thought for events they had to have police there.
If it's over so many people. I think the way it's written, it's gotta be, is it over a hundred people?
It'd be over a hundred people.
A hundred people at Pittsburgh Days. Not. These guys aren't required to have police presence. I mean, they're holding all the liability on the alcohol. That's.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know. We.
Yeah.
I don't have any strong feelings for or against. I mean, not, I mean, these, I, I know they'll be, I just in general with having alcohol at Pittsburgh Day, but that's actually not, that's not really what. I mean.
But that's what that's for.
Yeah, I know. But I know that they'll be, they will, um, be very professional and make sure to not over serve people and such if that's the concern.
Well, I guess my, I have the same concerns as you do, Tom.
That's.
Is it an appropriate place where, I don't know, but I guess at this point in time, I guess we try it and, and see what happens. I think it would have been nice if whoever the committee is that came up with this idea, because I did not know in the last meeting when we left. I don't think any of us knew when Pittsburgh Day even was until I got my newsletter and it was there.
That's all set up through the rec department, correct?
On the rec committee.
And the rec committee. So do we know where they're supposed to locate this?
I have no idea, Dan.
See, we've all.
Pittsburgh Day isn't just the rec committee. It's, no, it's not the rec committee.
Fire department too, right?
There's a lot of.
A lot of people were.
Because one year I was on the committee. He's, he's on, been on every year.
Right. So I'm sorry. It's, they have their meetings kind of back to back. So it's a bunch of people that are on the rec and then there's the Pittsburgh Day committee. But it's, didn't it start out as a fire department event?
It started out as a fire department originally, yeah.
But in my recollection, the select board has always been part of the process too. And for whatever least, maybe I'm the only one of us, but we got left out of it completely this year.
All of a sudden we got left out.
All of a sudden we got left out. Us doing anything with it last year.
I will say, I just, and, um, I thought that we did, I knew the date. I thought we were privy to it. I thought we voted, actually, didn't we not?
No. I don't think so.
I don't remember. I don't.
We usually vote for a date when we're gonna have it.
And I, so.
And we did not this year. There's been nothing. Can I ask a question? It might take some people off, but I think it's important. Why do you have a Pittsburgh Day committee if the select board is the one making the decisions?
What's going on at some point?
It wasn't that we were making the decisions. It was that we were informed of what was going on. Okay.
Well, I.
I think is, that's, that's my issue, is until I got my newsletter, I had no idea when it, because I asked you when we walked out last time if you knew when it was and you said you didn't know. And I didn't know. I'm gonna go through the rec notes that were given to us by our rec director and just see if it has been mentioned before.
I know, because I knew it was August third and I'm trying to remember why, like where I heard it from. I just. Um, anyways, we're kinda straying from, oh, what, the liquor board. So, um, it's already how many weeks away?
It's not far.
It's not far.
Right.
Um, I think at this point, my personal feelings are, it's, the ball's already rolling on this that we see how it works this year. And if it ends up being that, it's not a good fit to have alcohol at Pittsburgh Day. We just don't ever do it again. But I mean, these people are also very, I mean, they, they, they've been in business a long time, so.
So they've done the ones at the Brandon Carnival every year.
That's what, I know. I trust them, you know, so.
If you've gone to that, it's a pretty, pretty good setup with how they're fencing the area in and.
Yep.
There's usually three people, I think, there, two or three when they're working to keep an eye on things.
So if someone makes a purchase, they can't leave that designated area?
It's like a fair or anywhere else. That, that part.
So it is contained.
I'd kinda like to know where they were gonna set it up.
I really don't know.
Um, I don't know if it would be the same, but for, um, for the chili cookoff, it was like off the back, off the back end of the pavilion. So like away from like the main part of the rec.
You would hope that's where it was.
Yeah. So.
They were, they were allowed to take the beers to the tables when they food. So, so it was all within the pavilion.
So the pavilion was this fenced off area?
That was the area where it's.
Oh, was it the whole?
It's not fenced off, so.
Well, it has to be.
No, it was.
It has to be fenced. Because I know we discussed this.
As far as it went.
Was it Sarah's? It was one of the ones we discussed this alcohol thing at length about having it the rec, because we were concerned about the liability and whatever of having something. And I don't remember if it's.
No, I don't remember this conversation.
Might have been a beer or something.
Well, it may have been Brenda or it may have been, it may have even been John.
It may have been John.
It's no different than a bartender. The liability is on the server.
Right, no, but what I'm saying is we've had this conversation before and I understand that part. So the events at the town farm, they've had alcohol served outside?
And their pavilion actually was where it was at the last one.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the pavilion that we're talking about?
No, they're.
No.
Well, they're.
The rec.
Village Farm.
Rec pavilion.
But we, they did have Sarah Stories had, had a beer tent there and that was Leam Brew, I think.
Yep. You have to have a controlled area and they use the, they use the pavilion and that as a, for Sarah Stories.
So does, again, we're talking about the rec area.
Right.
So if they're serving beer or whatever in a fenced off, cordoned off area in the pavilion, that means that people with kids aren't gonna be able to use the pavilion?
Dan, the only thing I can do is ask them where they're planning on setting up.
True. The families went all around in the pavilion. You just couldn't take the beer out of that area.
So it's.
It's controlled.
I, I don't think that, I don't think that the people serving are gonna serve to underage people.
I don't know.
No, I just, obviously this is something that we probably wanna revisit because we all have some strong feelings on.
Have some questions.
No, 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 no. I mean, it's, it's important to think about because we'll have a lot more events going forward, so, um. But again, this is, um, so we have these two in front of us and one is for an event that's taking place in just a couple of weeks. So. Um, do I have a mo, we had them.
Yeah, we already got a motion.
We're already in the discussion phase, correct? Okay. Um, all right, all in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, thank you. So we'll adjourn liquor board, come back into select board and, um, if there's nothing else and I.
Can, can we request a little more information about where they're gonna set up?
I was planning on just getting that anyway, Dan, so.
Yeah, well.
Would we, would we, do we have another meeting before that event?
No.
Unless you have a tax rate meeting.
Yeah, unless we have a special meeting. But no, that's, it's just in two weeks.
Yeah.
I just would like to know a little bit more about it. Well, this is where this lack of communication.
Well, that's, so let's let Dave reach out to.
Is coming into play. I wouldn't mind coming in for a special meeting. I don't mean to step on this thing because it might be a good thing. I'd just like to know a little.
I think that Dave makes a good point and I, I actually have asked about this once or twice with.
Well, yeah.
Other boards and other committees.
Good point.
Guess you're right.
Should it be a requirement? Should the board require, like, the communication district? Should we hear from the mosquito district rep? Should we hear from the planning commission? Should we hear from the rec committee? Should we hear from the Pittsburgh Day committee at least quarterly? Should the board ask for updates or some kind of what's going on in your committees or boards?
Yeah.
A bad idea.
Because I, you know, like.
I'll discuss.
They, because they don't.
We, we started doing it before and then it fell apart.
So we could, well, the board could make something, like we could certainly do it for the next meeting. You guys could approve it now if you wanted to, that the boards and committees are required to submit a report to the select board, however, however you want it, quarterly, bi-annual.
Well, we should put it on the next agenda. We can't put it on it now.
Not sure they don't have to come here, but like Dave says, if we have a report in front of us that we can read, this is what we're doing or what you plan on doing, it brings us up to speed.
Well, yeah, so let's put it on the next agenda and let everybody think about it until then.
Well, yeah, because I don't like coming in here tonight seeing like I passed something that I just saw tonight.
Well, and, you know, the liquor one's weird because it's not like, you know, they seriously, Helen like downloads them daily, you know, and the, the thing is like come af, you know, so we have a meeting like, you know, you guys did approve for, for Helen or I to approve some of these, you know, little event ones throughout before it goes to the board to save some time. Um, but it still comes to the board after. But, um, some of these things we, we really don't know about until Helen hits print. And, you know, it's not her fault or anybody else's fault. It's just, that's the day it comes.
Now, well, the date, the date is like, is this, what does that say? Is that seven, five or five? Do you know what I mean? Is that the fifth month or the seventh month? In what order is that?
Month is first.
Month, usually month.
Date, so the year, so they have it like where the year is first. So is it then month and day or day and month?
Month and day.
Okay.
Month and then day.
July is.
Okay, so was July, so it was July fifth that this was submitted? Okay. Just wanted to make sure, see how like far along this has been sitting around.
Or did we not carry these or did the, did motion pass?
Yes.
It passed. It passed. So it's gonna go.
Because the other one was in.
Oh, yep.
I will, I will still get information so you guys know where we're setting up.
That would be great.
All right.
And I can certainly show you like what the requirements are from the state, just because I'm still familiar on how to get it, on how they have to set up and how they, they are approved to do this kind of stuff too, so by the state.
We have a, their insurance binder, I assume?
Um, we probably have one from the last time, so, yeah.
Make sure it's in effect, yeah.
This is one, this is one thing that this permit covers is that, you know, this is permitted, I mean, basically the state's issued the permit. They're waiting for your guys' blessing.
Okay.
But it's on the server. It's no different than any bar, you know, it's regardless of where you've gone after, it's on the bartender.
Are you, I think, okay, so I, I think we all understand that part, I think, and I, I granted, I voted to do it, but it's already in motion. It's two weeks away. I don't think it's, it's a time to stop it. But I think Tom and Dan and myself, it's a matter of Pittsburgh Days.
It's a family.
Um, is a fam, it, it's always been a non-alcohol event.
Yep.
So I think that's our concern is, is that something we really want at Pittsburgh Days? Is alcohol served?
Some rumors about.
You know, I think that's our, I mean, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but I think that's our concern. Exactly what I was saying, thinking, saying, yeah.
Must be the rec.
I think that's it. It's not.
I've heard comments that people don't like the fact that there's gonna be booze there. I've heard it from several people. So that's why, that's why I was a no vote. I'll be honest with you.
Share your concerns.
I'm sharing my concerns and what people said to me, so.
It wouldn't be a bad idea for at least me to hear some of these concerns pre-meeting too, so we can address it beforehand. I mean, you know, I have no problem with someone calling me and saying, hey, just to let you know.
Well, we did just get this tonight.
I just got this. I didn't know.
What if you, but you, you just mentioned that you heard.
I said, I've heard that they were having booze there and I said, I don't know who they are. Now here it is. That's why mine was a no vote. Be honest with you, that's why. You know, I, go what I hear.
Yeah, well, I, I understand that.
Were there ruffles feathers? I really don't care.
That's not what I was getting at, Tom. I think that just if there's a problem that's between the board meetings or a concern like that, I would, if someone called me, I would certainly go.
And I tell people.
Yeah, I would follow up immediately and find out what's going on with it. I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't attend every board and committee meeting.
Suggestion that we, that we put a policy in that we will not approve any liquor license unless it's thirty days before.
Good idea.
That at least gives us two meetings to discuss it.
Then that goes back against what was voted on the last time to allow Dave and Helen to approve short notice events.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right.
Short notice alcohol events or short notice events?
No.
Event, alcohol events. They were given permission two or three meetings ago that if a, a permit comes through.
I forgot that included alcohol.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I underst, that's a, a good idea, but we're still at the mercy of when the state downloads these to Helen, so.
That's the other, that's the other piece here, right?
How do we deal with that?
Right.
Well, no, I.
Right, but.
Right, that's, well, that's why I think Mark has pulled his suggestion back.
Unfortunately, it's not on like the server either at that point. It's, you know, it's in the system.
Do we, would we have any control over where they set this up? Honestly, if they're gonna set up in the pavilion in a cordoned off, demised area.
We're out of liquor board.
Yeah, I know. We are, we are, we did finish liquor board, so we gotta move on.
Well, it's just a general discussion.
Yeah, well, we'll have to.
I would be more than happy to follow up with them. Maybe after this meeting I will go down there and ask, you know, I, I would go do that because maybe I'll need a beer then.
Might need two.
All right, on that note, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So I'll make a motion.
The liquor board?
I already said, I get, you already.
You already got it out completely, okay.
Liquor board. All that stuff we just said about the move.
No secret, no secret. You're paying attention.
Need a second to Tom's motion to adjourn.
A second.
I'm here to say aye.
Aye.